I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Downing.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Stenzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malika.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman will be absent. Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, do we have any response to citizen inquiry?
Uh, no. Updates tonight. Thank you.
Are there any additions or deletions from council? Not...okay. We have, um, excuse me, two proclamations. One is concerning Men's Health Month, and I'll just read them from here. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women with Native American and African-American men, having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventive health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in healthy screenings. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop national men's health awareness as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. And whereas the Men's Health Month website has been established at www.menshealthmonth.org and features resources and information about awareness, events, and activities, including Wear Blue for Men's Health. And whereas Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular... I'm sorry. And colon cancer. And whereas the residents of the city are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado hereby proclaim June 2017 as Men's Health Month. And the City of Northland encourage all of our residents to pursue preventive health practices and the early detection efforts dated at Northland, Colorado this 12th day of June 2017.
Mayor?
Yes.
And I think you do have some people with this next proclamation that are here to accept it if you want.
Oh, okay. I was not aware of that.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. And I'll ask everyone to come forward, and you can tell me who you are, because I don't know. Come on. Do I have to go over there? Come on, you can come.
Why?
Why? Because we asked you to? Is that okay?
Because we're here.
I'm getting out my shoes.
What's your name again?
Tammy Lancaster.
Hi. Thank you for coming.
Hi, this is Bob O'Malley.
Hi, nice meeting you. Come on over here. Bring the little ones you want. Come on, it's okay. Hi, what's your name?
Cassai.
Hi, nice meeting you.
Dorian.
Hi, nice meeting you. Thank you for coming. Okay, I'm gonna read this, and then if anyone who wants to make a comment, you may. Okay. And this is concerning National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 93 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 have sustained non-fengel firearm injuries over the last five years. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens gives hand-in-hand... goes, I'm sorry. Goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local crime, criminal activity, and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas June 2nd, 2017 would have been the 20th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 93 Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2017 as the Third Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters went out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd and throughout the year to help raise awareness about gun violence and to honor the lives and lost human potential of Americans stolen by gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands. And we encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2017 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And the City of Northland encourage all residents to support their local community efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human rights dated at Northland, Colorado this 12th day of June 2017. So, would you like to say something, or anything? Do you guys want to?
Well, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for supporting the position.
Where is Robin?
I second that as well. This is, it's big, and I would like to see all of our cities and neighboring cities across the United States do the same as you have done, so thank you.
You third. You third. Okay. Okay, great, great. I appreciate you coming. So, thank you very much and being so supportive of this, because it is really, really important. So, okay. Thank you. Do you want to just shake hands with council? And you want...
Sure. Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
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 Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. Thank you. Have a great day. I love her shoes. I look here just like that. Have a great day.
Sweet.
Where's the next part of the scene?
I will. I will have it up to see. Thank you again. That's for me here.
That was it.
Okay, we'll hold it for you till you get a little older, okay? Well, you'll have to arm wrestle your sister, I think. Brother? All right, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is presentations, and Jim, did you want to...
Yes, I was gonna have Jason come up and introduce our auditor, and then we've got an action item later to adopt as well.
Okay, great. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got Jim Burke, Senior Manager from our independent audit firm, RSM, and he's gonna talk about the audit of the 2016 financial statements and everything that went into that process. So I'll let Jim go on that.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Pleased to be here. And as Jason said, we were the audit firm engaged to do the audit of the city's annual financial report for the year ended December 31, 2016. Today, I will briefly summarize the December 31, 2016 financial results and then go over the required communications that were required to communicate to council. All right, first up, I've got our revenue for all governmental funds. Revenues overall for governmental funds increased approximately $1 million this year. That was primarily due to the taxes. Licenses of permits were slightly down, charges for services slightly up, fines and forfeitures were slightly down, and all other revenue streams were slightly up. But there was about a million-dollar increase in taxes which drove the primary increase in revenue for governmental funds. For expenditures this year for governmental funds, expenditures were down $4 million, largely due to capital outlay expenses, which decreased about $4.5 million during 2016. General government expenses were up about $300,000. Public safety was up about $300,000. Public works and recreation culture were slightly down, so the main driver there was a decrease in capital outlay. As far as net position for governmental activities, net position increased approximately $6 million during 2016, and most of that was in the unrestricted category. There was a slight decrease in the net investment in capital assets and a slight increase in restricted net position, but your unrestricted net position is up about $6 million. As far as your general fund, unassigned fund balance, as a percentage of your expenditures, that increased from 83% in the prior year to 90.3% in the current year, or in 2016, which you have a healthy amount of unassigned fund balance to cover expenditures going forward.
And for Tabor, that has to stay at a minimum of 25, is that right? Is that the fund that, is that the account that has to stay at the minimum of 25% that we're at 90.3?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes. But that's not from Tabor. That's not a Tabor requirement.
Okay. Okay.
And when you look at your general fund, fund balance as of December 31, 2016, 95% of your general fund, fund balance is unassigned with only about 1% committed and 4% restricted. As far as your operating results for your enterprise funds, operating revenues were up about $700,000. Operating expenses were up about $300,000. Depreciation expense was down about $200,000. Net income excluding depreciation up about $500,000, and your cash flows from operations increased about $500,000 during 2016. And those are the brief summary of the operating results for 2016. Now I'll get into the required communications for our audit. As far as our responsibility, our responsibility to the city's financial statements is to render an opinion on the financial statements themselves. So we do our audit and our test work, and we have issued an opinion for the city's CAFR, which is an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion and the one that you want to receive from your audit. As far as changes in accounting policies during 2016, the major change was the adoption of GASP 72, which goes into disclosures for fair value measurements for investments. And basically, when you look at your investment footnote, it explains in a little more detail how the fair value is arrived at and the inputs that are looked at to come up with the fair value of those investments. And then it classifies those investments as either Level 1 inputs, Level 2 inputs, or Level 3 inputs. The city's investments are primarily Level 2. They do have one Level 1 investment source. Level 1 basically means that you're seeing that exact investment traded in an active market, and you can see it priced daily. Level 2 investments, which are the majority of the city's investments, they're identical investments that are traded in the active market so that you can look at solid evidence to arrive at their fair value. Level 3 is a little more harder to arrive at the actual fair value in comparison. The city does not have any Level 3 investments. But the primary change from the adoption of GASP 72 was your footnote disclosure on the investments and describing how those investments are fair valued. As far as management's accounting estimates, the biggest accounting estimates for the city are the fair value of investments, which we just talked about, and then the assumptions used in looking at other post-employment benefit plan. Now, the city engages an actuary to help them with the assumptions and looking at the benefit plan, and we have internal valuation specialists that independently go ahead and look at the actuary's assumptions as well, and we had no differences with the actuary used by the city. As far as audit adjustments go, there were no audit adjustments booked to the original trial balances provided by the city, and I don't know if that's something you may be used to hearing, but it's not something we're always used to saying. So the city is doing a very good job with their accounting team. Uncorrected misstatements, we had no uncorrected misstatements that we proposed in the city that were material and the city refused to book. We had no disagreements with management during our audit. We encountered no difficult...oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's all right. We had, we encountered no difficulties encountered in performing our audit. As far as future accounting pronouncements that the city will be adopting in the next year, couple of years, those can all be found in footnote 6 or page 47 of the CAFR. There's nothing in there, there's, there's five pronouncements that we've listed on page 47, and there's nothing major that is gonna impact the city. Most of it is, you know, addressing practice issues or changes in disclosures, but we will look at those accounting pronouncements with the management as they come due and make sure that the city is in compliance with the adoption of all due accounting standards. The GFRA submission, the city, you know, submits their CAFR to receive the excellence in financial reporting, which you did receive last year as well, and I'm sure that the city will be receiving that this year as well. As far as the report on internal control over financial statements, we did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we would have to report during our audit. With that, I will turn it over to you for any questions that you might have.
Questions? Comments? None. Well, thank you so much for coming this evening.
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Next, is public invited to be heard. No one's signed up, but is there anyone here that would like to speak to council? Seeing no one approach, we will move to the financial report. Jason?
Good evening, the gun mayor and council.
Now he's sitting here, so don't screw this up.
I know.
He's gonna have to change everything that he just said.
This is a really good control test for next year, if you can see that we do that.
He said some really nice things about you, so...
Do some updates. So that's a good thing. So this is our interim financial reports through April. I'll start off with an update on sales and use tax. It's actually down 2.5% year-over-year. Within that, you know, food tax is up about 1.8%, auto use tax is up 13%, and then just overall sales tax specifically is down 4.8%. So it all kind of nets out to being down about 2.5%. And so that's January, February, and March that's been booked through the year. Next, the general fund revenues. I'll touch on briefly. Total taxes collected through April were at $4.7 million. That's up, you know, less than half a percent compared to the prior year. Intergovernmental revenues are up 3.5% at $500,000. Licenses and permits are up 18%. That net total is actually $33,000, so the percentage is large, but the impact is kind of small in the scheme of the $26 million general fund budget. Charges for services, those are relatively flat at just under $800,000. And then fines and forfeitures are down at $300,000, which is down 25% year-over-year, or about $102,000. So the total revenue through April was at $6.7 million, which is a 0.5% increase. So I would say it's, it's safe to say that our revenues are flat year-over-year in the general fund. On the expenditure side, you know, things are tracking as we would expect. The spending rate is at 26.33% last year, and typically, the spending rate is about 26% to 27%. So we fall in line on that aspect. Total expenditures are at $6.8 million, which is up a little over 4% or $280,000 year-over-year. Again, the budget was expect, you know, planned an increase in spending, and so there's nothing to note through the first few months of the year in the general fund expenditures. On page four, the water and wastewater fund, you'll see total revenues at $3.1 million and total expenditures of $5.2 million. Total revenues are down about 3% in the fund. I guess we'll see what transpires as the season starts to dry out and people need to water a little bit more. On the water, water and sewer usage, you can see those in the blue box down below. Water usage is up just slightly, about 0.7%, and then sewer is down just about 3%. Part of that's timing on billing year-over-year, more so than anything.
Can I interrupt you real quick, Jason?
Sure.
And maybe it's a Jim question, or I don't know who. But you're, you're talking about the water, and I know that we're pushing for water conservation, and I'm just kind of curious where we're at with that and how that's gonna fall in, because obviously, people will start watering more, but we're going to be encouraging people not to maybe water as much. And so, how is that falling in with your projections? And then, I don't know if it's appropriate just to give a, see where we're at on that. Have we started the community outreach on that?
Yes, we have. We did social media almost immediately after we got that authorization from you last time, back in May, I think it was. And I believe we've done some things in the June connections as well. Again, these are more reminding people of the waste of water ordinance and telling them, you know, be conservative, you know, don't turn things on, more educating them than anything else. But we've not done anything mandatory that we think is gonna have a negative impact on revenues. But in general, we've started the campaign, if you will, just educating people.
Is it affecting your projections at all?
No, year-over-year, we're pretty consistent as far as consumption goes. Obviously, sometime, we typically expect some sort of conservation effort on an annual basis. You know, we did the study a few weeks ago with StanTech, and that, you know, and their model identified, you know, an assumed rate of conservation. So it does impact revenues as you conserve, so it's, you know, that can be a challenge conserve, but then we need money to fix infrastructure, so...
Well, and I'm just curious of the effect if we start being more aggressive in our, in our water conservation measures rather than just education if we're, you know, pushing for watering days, if that's, you know, because what was brought to us was that it's a, it's a pretty big drought that we're going through right now. I mean, and I'm not, you know, so I'm just wondering if, if that's coming down the line and if we should be projecting for that affecting our revenues.
So, um, I'm trying to remember the specifics just off the top of my head, but I gave an update to council a couple of weeks ago about Stanley Lake that we got from our water group, and, um, long story short, Clear Creek was in Free River a couple of weeks ago, which basically means that there's, there's no call on the river, there's no priority, everyone can take whatever, kind of what they want, if you will, under their appropriation. Stanley Lake was, was full of our water, but Westminster, I think, was close to their supply, but Thornton was short, and since we all share it, we have to allocate accordingly. I think it's really a matter of just of time when we get the snow melt and we should be, I don't want to say out of the woods, but we'll be in more of a normal year, hopefully, still this year. What we've stopped short of doing is doing any kind of formal restrictions and fines and things like that, and I think that is, I don't want to say draconian, but a drastic step that would go above and beyond the waste of water ordinance that would have a, we'd probably have to model some revenues and figure out how that would affect it if we really went that route.
Yeah. So, overall, with that, in 2017, without any rate increase or anything of that sort, you'd expect revenue to be flat in, in the fund, and then, of course, with some conservation, potentially, possibly a decline if we get to that. So, thank you. I'll touch on the stormwater funds. Briefly, operating revenues are at $116,000 and expenditures of $75,000. Those fall in line with what we'd expect year-over-year and then along with the budget for the year. And then lastly, the sanitation fund, we'll see total revenues of $543,000 and total expenditures of $341,000. Both are consistent year-over-year. You'll see trash charges. We did implement an increase for 2017, and we're seeing that in the trash charges being up about 34% year-over-year. That was the plan that we had implemented, and so we're seeing that in our financials.
Is that still at, pretty much a break-even point then, is kind of what our goal was with that increase?
Correct. Yep. And then lastly, on page seven, there's an update on our cash investments that we have. They're at $55.2 million, and that's up from $53.4 through April of 2016. Marketplace sales tax history on page eight, you'll see through April, you can really see January, February, March in that bar graph. Each month is kind of falling behind. Overall sales tax history you'll see, and then on page 10, the geographic codes. And I think there's, there's been some improvements over the last couple of months on the GO codes, and I can say that for next month, there's even better signs, I guess, of the economy locally, kind of coming back as far as from a sales tax, sales tax perspective. So I think statewide, it's been pretty slow first quarter of the year. Talking to my colleagues at other surrounding jurisdictions, they've seen some slow, kind of sluggish sales tax numbers to start the year, and I think we're creeping out of that once we, once we get to May. So with that, is there any questions on any other aspect?
Questions?
All right.
Let's just sound like it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Good job on your audit, too.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the consent agenda.
Vote to approve.
Please open the vote. Vote is open.
We'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearings. First one is CB 1887.
A bill for an ordinance consolidating and amending articles within Chapter 6 of the Northland Municipal Code regarding disposition of personal property.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on CB 1887. Is there anyone that would like to speak, either for or against CB 1887? Seeing no one approach, I will close the public hearing on CB 1887, and we will move to CB 1888.
A bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 7, amending Chapter 9 by the addition of a new Article 17, and amending Chapter 14 by the addition of a new Article 5 of the Northland Municipal Code. article five of the North Glenn Municipal Code related to nuisance abatement procedures.
Thank you. I will now open a public hearing on CB eighteen eighty-eight. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB eighteen eighty-eight? Seeing no one approach, we'll close that public hearing on CB eighteen eighty-eight and move to CB eighteen eighty-nine.
A bill for an ordinance amending article eleven of chapter nine of the North Glenn Municipal Code related to nuisance abatement procedures.
I'll now open the public hearing on CB eighteen eighty-nine. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB eighteen eighty-nine? Seeing no one approach, I'll close that public hearing, and we'll move to ordinance's second reading. And Joanna, CB eighteen eighty-seven.
A bill for an ordinance consolidating and amending articles within chapter six of the North Glenn Municipal Code regarding disposition of personal property.
Move to approve second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, you saw this at first reading on May twenty-second and approved unanimously, and this was an ordinance to consider repealing the municipal code, chapter six, article twelve, titled Sales of Abandoned Personal Property, and then to amend chapter six, article fourteen of the code titled Unclaimed Personal Property, and retitle it as Disposition of Personal Property. Staff recommends approval, and myself and Chief Mayor and Mr. Hoffman are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Discussion? Comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
We'll close that vote, and CB eighteen eighty-seven on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next ordinance is CB eighteen eighty-eight.
A bill for an ordinance amending chapter seven, amending chapter nine by the addition of a new article seventeen, and amending chapter fourteen by the addition of a new article five of the North Glenn Municipal Code related to nuisance abatement procedures.
Move to approve.
Can we take eighteen eighty-eight and eighteen eighty-nine together? They're all in the same memo.
We could, we could. So Joanna, would you read eighteen eighty-nine also, then?
So CB eighteen eighty-nine is a bill for an ordinance amending article eleven of chapter nine of the North Glenn Municipal Code related to nuisance abatement procedures.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Discussion or comments on?
Very brief, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Brown is a step ahead of me. My comments are going to be on both of these items. So you had a study session on this, May fifteenth. First reading was May twenty-second, and again, it's two ordinances that will amend the municipal code as it relates to enforcement and abatement of nuisances. There's a lot of detail in the report, of course, and Brooke and Tom Carlson are here to answer any questions as well.
Comments, discussion, questions? Seeing none, open the vote, please.
The vote is open.
Please vote. On CB eighteen eighty-eight and eighteen eighty-nine.
We'll close that vote, and CB eighteen eighty-eight and CB eighteen eighty-nine on second reading both pass unanimously.
Thank you. All right, next is resolutions. The first one is CR sixty-five.
A resolution is accepting the audit of the comprehensive annual financial report for the city of North Glenn for the year ended December thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen.
Move to approve second.
Jim?
Staff has no other comments other than the presentation we made earlier. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open. We'll close that vote, and CR sixty-five passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR sixty-six.
A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state historic preservation office requesting certified local government status for the city of North Glenn.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This is a resolution which would authorize the mayor to sign the certified local government application. And just to brief you on what this is, it's administered through the state historic preservation officer, also known as SHIPO, and it really allows federal, or excuse me, historic preservation commissions to apply for state, federal grants, conduct surveys, assessments, et cetera. And so really, this is the next step in really advancing historic preservation throughout the community is to become a CLG. It's, uh, it's got a lot of detail in here as well, and Brooke has put this application together, and so he can answer any detailed questions you may have.
Thank you. All right, discussion?
I just have one comment. It's on page five, and I think it's about Brooke's resume, and it says he was severed in Central City. I thought I might bring that up. So if we, I think he means "served," I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
That was a nice catch.
Other than that, I'm really, really excited about this. I think this is a great step in the right direction, and, you know, for our city. And I know we have a couple, we have a couple buildings that are already, and people that own them are already interested in moving forward with this. So this is really exciting for us. All right, any other comments? Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
We'll close that vote, and CR sixty-six passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion items, and it's Connect North Glenn Pilot Program. Jim?
So all of Brooke and Ashley come up. If you recall, we've got the Connect North Glenn project moving forward, and this was actually part of that contract, if you will, or part of our budget, I should say, to do a pilot project. And so the team led by Brooke and Ashley have been working to identify a potential site. And I did talk with Councilmember Whitman over the weekend about some of her concerns about signage and notifying the community, so I think Brooke's going to cover some of those items as well. Just want to make sure that that got on the record as well.
Thank you. Brooke?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I will step through just some of the highlights of the staff memo, and just want to point out that this has kind of been a very iterative process internally to come to tonight. And when we did our kickoff meeting, we identified this pilot project, and before commencing with it, we wanted to come back and just share with you the recommendation that came up through the staff process, and also the effort that we intend to engage leading up to and then implementing and then afterwards for the project. So with that, we established criteria, and then we went through sort of an internal selection review process, which I will not go into great detail because we'll be here all night, and you know how much I like to talk. But more importantly is that through this process, working with Public Works and also with other stakeholders like the school, we really tried to figure out a location that we thought would be the most representative of the community in terms of residential, commercial, and other uses like the school and churches, to sort of have a good test case and demonstration project for how bike ped would actually look in the community. So with that, I want to focus more on the, what we've identified as the project itself. So we're looking at Grant Street from Muriel up to Malle, and we're proposing bike lanes on both sides, and all of the appropriate MUTCD signage will be provided for that. One of the things that we're doing in front of the school is rather than having the bike lane in that location, is we're putting in what they call a shareo identification, where basically you put the bike symbol down on the road, and that's what you see depicted in the plans and also in the information in the background. So with that, before we start this process of actually doing a project, we are going to notify the surrounding neighborhood, which we've identified an attachment to, which is the blue highlighted area, which you'll notice starts up at Malle and goes south of Muriel. And what we wanted to do is to try to capture those who would be most impacted. Now, attachment three is going to be a two-sided document that we're going to mail out to all of those folks. You'll notice that there's a couple of lengths with dates and whatnot, and we didn't plug those in yet until we presented this to council, because we wanted to give you the opportunity to see it first before we did that. But more importantly, we will send that out in advance of doing the project, and then in addition to it, in the advance of the project, we're talking about sending this letter out about three weeks prior. And then ten days prior is those snipe signs, the little, you know, real estate signs that you see. We intend to put those along Grant Street as well to identify folks that a project is coming. And then following that, we would then install the striping. And then through a social media event promotion, as well as, we would host a grand opening event one week after the installation, and the goal would be is that we'd probably do a morning rush hour and then an evening rush hour, where we'd have a kiosk tent set up probably at the school to have information and have people come up and ask questions if they have concerns and whatnot. All through this process, we're going to be monitoring feedback as well as educating people about what we're trying to do. One other thing I want to mention is with this process, as you may recall, council had requested striping to be done at a hundred and fourth and Grant. We were actually able to piggyback off of that proposal and got a proposal from the same contractor to do this striping, and we've estimated that striping to be approximately fifty-two hundred dollars. We had originally budgeted fifteen thousand within the project budget, so we're going to realize some savings with that as well. So with that, I will open up to any questions that you guys have.
Questions? Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had the opportunity to speak with Councilmember Whitman as well, and we discussed it being that this is in Ward Three, and also have some kind of concerns, because we've had issues on Grant already with pedestrians and cars and whatnot. And so I'm kind of curious of why this section was chosen, what other sections were looked at, and then what measures you all are taking to ensure that the bicycle lanes and the bicyclists are, it's going to be safe, obviously.
Sure. Let me work that backwards. So in terms of the safety, this will actually, with the striping program, is probably what other folks for traffic calming call a road diet. So the idea here is it'll probably help with traffic speed in that regard and safety, because it'll help better give recognition for lane definition. I know that one of the comments that I heard is, you know, people passing around on the, at intersections with someone turning left. That's hard to control, but what we intend to do with this is with the appropriate signage is have it identified in front at the approaches of each segment of this to have the appropriate signage for identifying that this is a bike area. And I think more importantly is that with this, you're going to probably see slower speed, which means probably better pedestrian identification from it as well. In terms of the selection process, I can tell you that we spent hours investigating other roadways. I will say that from an internal staff standpoint, the ideal roadway would be either north or south of a hundred and fourth on Melody, but we know the concerns that have been expressed by council. We also looked at other streets that went east-west, and one of the things that we were struggling with with the east-west aspects is the distance of those major residential collector streets like Muriel or Garland that could end Larson that would otherwise serve, also have adjacencies to existing trail systems that aren't very far off. So we didn't really think that we were going to get heavy utilization because there's existing trail connections there already. One of the things that really stood out about this particular corridor, in addition to having some requests for traffic safety mitigation, is that it's representative of businesses to the north, you have a church also to the north, and then you have a school and residential in the intermediate area. And so this really kind of gives an opportunity to show how bike ped can work in all of those different mediums, whereas some of the other areas was almost exclusively residential as opposed to having the other types of things used.
And I'm pro bike ped mobility, but you have to also remember that school's not in session right now, and that was a lot of our issues is when that school's in session.
Right.
So I just want to keep that. And if I can just ask one more question, Mayor. What are you measuring? I mean, that's kind of what I'm curious of. You know, you're talking about kind of usage and trying to figure this out and seeing if this is something that fits in North Glenn, which I love it, I love the idea, but I know with cars, we have the little strip that they run over and that tells us who's using the lanes and gives us, you know, the usage. Are you doing that with bicycles in the bicycle lane, or are you going to have people sitting out there all day kind of counting who's using? I'm just kind of curious how we're going to get this data to sell this.
Sure. I think that one of the big things that we want to do is to have the community weigh in and provide feedback, and that's one of the things that we have as one of the last bullets, is that we're going to be monitoring the feedback into the fall to sort of see how people react to it, what people's thoughts are, what their concerns are. Because I think one of the things that we want to try to do is rather than do a plan and then not have an actual test to sort of gauge how the community reacts to it, you set yourself up for more challenges for implementation down the road. So this is really intended to be a test case. We're not necessarily intending to go out there with a clicker and monitor how many, what the utilization is, per se. As much as it is, it's getting people in the community familiar with this type of road program in a specific setting.
Thank you.
Becky?
How many, I noticed that you have the install non-parking, no parking signs and stuff like that. How much parking are they actually going to be giving up? Are they losing, I'm sorry?
So right now, you can park on both sides of the street, and one of the things that we did is we've actually done some PM observations to see how much parking utilization is taking place on Grant at night, and it's not, it's not heavily utilized for on-street parking as it currently functions. So we don't really think there's going to be a substantial impact. One of the reasons that for, in front of the school, that we did not extend the bike lanes down was that we were concerned about eliminating parking on both sides, because we know of the concerns that take place during the peak period there. There is parking allowed on both sides, and that's why we designated the shareo, because we felt that would be a safer approach, knowing that what the peak times of the school actually looks and operates as. And it is reflected in the staff memo, but we did have broad support from the planning manager and also the school principal.
Here.
Where you show it ending, the project ending at Muriel, is that correct, first of all?
Yep.
Okay. It's kind of concerning there, that's where it's shared, right?
Correct.
Where it's shared. So then you're just kind of going to a four-way stop at Muriel, correct?
That's right.
I guess it's more, how do you educate drivers to know actually what to do in this situation when you're in a shared situation that they haven't ever had to deal with before? I just think it gets confusing, and will there be some type of identification that that's actually the end of the pilot program at that point, and then you just kind of converge like you would have otherwise?
Like you would have otherwise done had you been riding your bike down there.
Right.
Anyways, yeah, we're actually going to have signage that with the stake signs, it goes in the front and back of both sides of this, that I think will help with that. One of the things that related to this that we've talked about in the past, you know, on a leadership level, is when schools come in, when schools come into session, is to actually try to put these similar types of signs saying, "School's starting in a couple of weeks." So one of the things that we can also do is reemphasize this signage before the school starts, so people understand what's actually happening leading up to that as well. So I think we can also accomplish that as part of the program, too.
But will there be signage at that intersection saying this is the end of the pilot program?
Yes, we can do that.
I don't say it, but now you converge, whatever.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, were you done?
Yep.
The school, Stukey, is it charter or is it neighborhood?
Neighborhood.
Right. Neighborhood.
I'm not sure.
It's a neighborhood school.
I think it's a regular, regular school.
It's a neighborhood school.
Okay. I just want to make, because, you know, with it being a neighborhood school, then everybody in the neighborhood's going to know what's going on. Our experience, living down the street from two charter schools, it's a nightmare, because nobody really cares about your neighborhood, they're just going to haul us through it anyway, you know? And I just want to make sure that we're not going to deal with that aspect, because these people know.
As far as I know, this isn't Adams Twelve School, that's the principal responding.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to echo what Kyle said, I'm sorry. I'm confused as to what data you're going to have at the end of the day that is beneficial to me in making decisions moving forward. So I need to touch and feel, I don't know what you're going to measure.
Sure. So let me put it, maybe data is not the most important thing here, is that this is a community engagement exercise, and what we're really trying to do is to give an opportunity for people to react to it. So it's not a quantitative as much as it is a qualitative exercise, and really, I think what we're trying to show is that here's how we can do something like this that meets standard, that meets the safety requirements, see how it goes. If we have a lot of negative feedback, we have money in the budget to put it back the way it was. But I think it's not so much like, what's the utilization and what's the success rate here? It's more like, what's the acceptance and what's the, what's the general, you know, reaction to what we're proposing, and is it something that the community wants to embrace?
So can I ask one more question? With the low level of community involvement that we have, I mean, we can all agree in that, what are you putting into place if they're educated before besides this mail?
So we are going to have signs.
Oh, besides the signs?
Well, we are also going to Well, we are also going to use a social media outlet, and I believe we're also going to try to get something into the North Glen connection as well. So we're going to do the full court blitz that we normally do on the planning projects for outreach. One other thing I wanted to, I was going to mention at the end of this conversation as an anecdote, we've had over 100 responses to our online survey for the bike ped, which is really great and substantial feedback that we've gotten. We've had really good success. We did the bike rodeo. We also did a recent staff intercept over at the RTD Park and Ride at Wagon Road, where we had people, we had the big map, the vinyl map, out, and we had people engaging on that level. So we are trying to do everything we can on the outreach front to make sure that the messaging's being put out there.
Thank you.
It just occurred to me, Brooke, you know, we're going to have that Bike to Work Day, maybe you could have something over there.
We are.
Okay.
And in fact, we are, we're doing a bike ped and heel tent out there.
Great.
So we're going to be having some free stuff for folks who come up, to try to help engage people with that, and we're working with Smart Commute.
Okay, good. Good, great. And yes, Antonio?
Yeah, mine's about timetable.
Yep.
So when we actually do this?
So, here was the thing, is that we got the bid about a month ago, and one of the questions that we were trying to figure out was, would the contractor honor the pricing, knowing that we weren't going to be able to do them at the same time? So what we now need to do is to go back to the contractor, figure out a schedule, work backwards from their schedule to do the three weeks prior mailer, and then the 10-day prior signage out into the street before we would implement it. So we need to go back and have that conversation, and we can update that through the city manager's office as to what that final schedule looks like.
Okay, so we don't know whether it'll be before school starts or after school starts?
It will likely be in late June or early July is when we do this.
Early July.
Yeah.
School starts August.
In August.
Yeah, August.
Yeah.
So in the bond that just passed Adams 12, is there any, was there any discussion about, whatever they call the drop-off point, kiss and go, or, different schools call it different things.
Right.
Drop-off points? Is that going to interfere with that? Do they, does the school district plan to do anything with that? They're going to change the dynamics of their parking lot, the roadway, the entrance, egress?
At this time, no. We're actually, we have one of the Adams 12 project managers is part of the stakeholder committee that we have for the project, and so we're communicating with them. Because as we've mentioned before in the kickoff meeting, one of the big things that we're looking at doing with the bike ped is to look at safer routes to schools, and trying to work with them in terms of prioritization. Rather than just picking one off to plan and one to do, we want to try to figure out where's the greatest level of need, and so that's part of what the accident rate history and everything else that we're, and the overall project will do, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Thank you. So I have a quick question about the evaluating of this project. How do you plan on evaluating it, to what standards, and then based off that, how long do you think it will take to then say, "This was a successful project, we're going to then choose this area to implement this same thing"?
So, we are, we're not looking to implement further beyond this.
Yeah.
And in fact, what we will likely do is that part of the bike ped plan has an implementation strategy where we will prioritize, and that will involve you folks to weigh in and give your input on that. We'll have an iterative process for that. So I think what we really want to try to do is to learn what the pluses and minuses are, and then that way, as we roll out implementation, we have a community engagement component to that, that tries to build upon what we learned from this exercise.
Awesome.
Did that answer everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time. And, you know, I also just want to also pass on, just as a footnote to the nuisance regulations, I want to thank Cory's office, and also Tom Carlson, they did a really good job of taking the lead on this and trying to get that done, and I just want to pass that on and give him credit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Next, we move to communications, and Kim, we'll start with you today.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. We met as a legislative committee tonight before council, and so we were able to discuss some of the things that went well for us down at the Capitol, and that we think went well with lobbying and everything. We are discussing coming up with our next policy statement as a city, and so be on the lookout for that. And we also discussed having, scheduling tentatively our legislative policy dinner on October 30th, which is a fifth Monday. So, and I don't know if we have a location, it's just kind of got a date right now.
Probably Chin Zadiz again.
Chin Zadiz, okay. So we're moving forward on that, and it's exciting, and I think we had a good year this year, and that committee's, you know, growing and becoming better every year, so.
Great. Thank you. Jordan?
Yeah, just one quick thing. Yoga in the Park is this week. I just recently started doing yoga. It's really fun, it's cool to do it in the park, bring out your family. It's this Wednesday, 6:30 to 7:30 at EB Raines.
Great. Kara?
I wanted to mention the improvements that were done by the city at the Fox Run Nature Area. It is complete, and honestly, I know we waited a while, but it really looks great. The trails, just the fine crusher gravel looks great on there. They did have a washout when we had that really bad storm last week. I know they went up there and they filled it in, but they've added signage, they've added benches, it's really beautiful, there's some really nice places to sit and enjoy it now. So thank you to everybody who, especially Amanda, since she was obviously in lead, in charge of that project. It looks good. I also wanted to say that, reminder that the Senior Center is holding their Veterans Coffees every Wednesday at 9:00 AM. So they'd really like to have a good showing, it's been a little bit sparse until it takes off, so if you know anybody who might be interested in sitting around, having coffee, and talking shop with some other veterans, that would be great. The, all the Art on Parade sculptures have been installed, which everybody probably knows by now, but what you may not know is that in lieu of six, there's only five this year, because one arrived damaged. And because of the damage, we didn't feel that it was going to hold up, even if it was repaired in the park, because it was very fragile. So Michael kind of decided, I'm sure it wasn't just Michael, but they decided to just leave that one out and only go with five sculptures this year in lieu of six. And that's it.
Becky?
You know what? I don't have anything. I know, I'm shocked and appalled. I have nothing.
I had to rest for a week.
Nice. That's really good. Cory?
Just one thing, and that is that, as this council may recall, you filed an amicus brief in a case involving whether or not, for construction defect purposes, a builder could essentially put a provision in the covenants that would say that certain provisions related to arbitration could never be amended. Well, last Monday, the Colorado Supreme Court found in favor of allowing those covenants not to be amended, so in favor of the position that the city took, consistent with what the city's ordinances have been amended to include related to a mandatory arbitration provision as a part of a plat note. So it's another, another step in the construction defect process, where the Colorado Supreme Court issued an opinion that I think, for what this council's policy has been, is definitely a good step in support of this council's policy.
Great. Good news. Jim?
Just two quick items. I got a call from Jerome Davis's office on Friday from Xcel Energy, and they were offering to meet with any of us at CML for up to an hour. So I want to throw it out here tonight to any of you. I don't have a date or a time, so we might have to kind of take what they give us at this point, but want to see if there's any interest, and we'll circle back with them tomorrow and try to get a firmed-up date and time.
We typically try to meet with them, and usually we have Cory go with us also, just because. So whoever wants to join us, you know, this.
Now, there, so, there consensus to try to get a time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to get some alternatives if we can, but it's in a week, so it might be kind of tight.
They'll probably just try to fit us in like they normally do.
Okay. And we did get invited to their joint dinner with, I think, three or four other firms on Wednesday, so, okay.
Anything else?
Not you.
No.
Yeah, just one other thing. Next Monday, we have, we have one item on the agenda. It is not necessarily an urgent item that is holding up any projects or anything like that, and it's the idea of marijuana business hours of operation. We've already done the work, the memo's ready to go, but I wanted to offer it all to you that we could put that on July 17th, or we can come in for one item next week. Again, I'll defer to you, I'm here all day anyway, so.
All right. I would kind of like to move it to the 17th, personally, but anyone else have any opinions on it? On one item?
I'm good.
Yeah. I think we're going to go and move it to the 17th.
And I don't know if council's interested, you, I don't think this is going to be a long item, you could even put it as a discussion item on your regular council meeting.
I like that idea.
For, what, June 26?
June 26.
Could have been on tonight, since we had a short meeting.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. Sounds even better.
So, with that, there are no study session items next Monday.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
This is the first time in a long time.
Really?
No. All right. And Joanna?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next is public invited to be heard, three minutes for speakers, anyone that would like to speak to council? Tim?
We all look at you, you know you have something to say.
Ooh, he's coming out.
Tell us how wonderful we are, at least.
I know, we haven't seen you for a while.
I know, I was getting worried personally.
Tim Morgan, I represent Beagle at 11450, no, 11450 Cherokee Street. I hope the city council will take into consideration not changing the operation hours, and I look forward to that debate in an open, public forum. Again, we have seen absolutely no evidence that it will create any additional value to anything else than maybe purchases from impulse buyers, who's maybe out in the nightlife getting something to drink. It's basically not something that we, in my company, think is a good idea at this point. We've seen in Aurora, people being shot, maybe not in the summertime, but at least at the winter times, and the stores that we are operating are located in shady areas, to say the least. To extend hours would be a bad idea, especially if there's no real solid reason to do so. Second of all, we are very excited in Rotary, now I'll take my Rotary hat on instead, and